Gland of allegiance?
I gland allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Allen is here. Ms. Ballantyne.
Here.
Ms. Bash.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Rasmussen.
Yes.
Mr. Samuel Lamb.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion is your second? Second, let's vote.
Oh, it's Nancy.
That was like, that's like, that's what happened.
It is.
Just thought I'd give you a little sneak peek. We're good.
Motion carries seven zero.
Yep.
All right. Uh, public announcements, recognitions, and upcoming events.
We don't have quite as many as we usually do with, uh, spring break being in this, uh, section between meetings, but, uh, good news to announce on our Evansville High School varsity math team. They won the Rock Valley Conference Math Meet, uh, before spring break, March 11th. Um, first place is a team, and then, um, Carter Stroick was the leading, uh, scorer with a third-place individual, uh, award, and then Xavier Debold, fourth place, and then Butter Stewart also sixth place. We also had another couple, one in ninth and then one in 14th, too. Uh, in addition to that, we had three students that qualified for the state forensics meet. That is, uh, Annika Crone, Dave Morbacher, and Kate Powell. So that, uh, district event was at EHS. That was on March 10th. Uh, also, I knew one of these, and then I was actually surprised by the other. I did know that Gretchen Cuff was the Region Five Wisconsin Association of Student Council's, um, advisor of the year for the middle school student council here in Evansville, but, uh, only found out, and actually I found it out on our Facebook page, and then had to reach out to him. He did not want any recognition, so he was keeping that very quiet. But, uh, Kendall Butchon was nominated by a student and, uh, was then the senior high school administrator of the year from the W A S C. So congratulations to Kendall as well. I had texted him this morning, and he said I was trying to keep that a secret. Uh, we also celebrated our, it was National Prayer Professionals Day in Evansville. We call them, uh, educational assistants. Uh, we have quite a group of them, and, uh, we did celebrate them right after spring break on April 7th, uh, excuse me, April 2nd. And then last Friday was National School Librarian Day. Um, actually, right before this meeting, Lori Crandall snuck out. If you know, excuse me, Lori at all, um, she wants to give credit to her whole team. There's a clerk now, uh, thanks to the referendum passing at each one of those buildings. They do, uh, specials rotations with, um, uh, the different schools, and so they are fully staffed now, and she's really happy that she can do some of the work that she's, uh, been having to put off because of that. But, uh, we wanted to recognize our clerks and our school librarian. And then this week is National Assistant Principals' Week, so, uh, we just want to thank Kim Katzenmeyer. Um, Scott Kramer at the middle school is dean of students' role, so doesn't have the responsibilities that Kim does, but does some similar work. Kim has, um, uh, can do things with suspensions, uh, can do things with evaluations of staff as well, uh, with her licensure. So thank you to the two of them. And then upcoming, uh, this week, we'll hear a little bit, uh, from, um, uh, Ms. Erdol about child. Uh, Friday is a family fun night at Levi, and then, of course, uh, big weekend, 60th anniversary of the Evansville musical. Uh, that starts Friday night. I have my tickets for Friday, so that should be fun. Uh, by the way, you may not care about this, out of the blue, my daughter, knowing that we're gonna go, this read Matilda over spring break, so she's telling, my wife's read it multiple times as a fourth-grade teacher to her class, but we were hearing about, you know, the, you know, sleazy dad and all these other things, a trunchbull, so she's, she's ready for Matilda. Uh, we also have a professional learning day on April 21st, and have one more in May, and then Administrative Professionals Day, otherwise known as Secretary's Day, is later on in April, so we will celebrate that as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other, um, announcements? If not, is there any public presentations? All right, moving on. District Administrator update.
Well, go right into mine. Um, we, uh, I guess it's good no, uh, news, like no news is good news. Uh, but, uh, for the Every Student Succeeds Act, uh, we were not identified in any area, which is good, because if you're identified in some area where you're not up to speed, uh, they do give you, uh, measures that you have to put into place and then improvement plans that you have to do. So we are, are happy about that. Um, in, in, uh, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, um, identifications, again, we did, we met the requirements, but it did give us some goals for, uh, the future. Uh, special education dropouts is one area we want to keep an eye on. Um, anytime that you have a student with an IEP that does not graduate on time with their peers, it can, uh, be a ding on a report card or a report like this, so we want to make sure that, uh, we get them graduating with their peers. Uh, one that we really can't control as much, but it's the number of students, um, that may not be in a mainstream classroom, and that's oftentimes because they've got something written into their IEP based on the needs that they have, where they're going to, uh, receive, uh, individualized instruction or specialized instruction. Uh, another one that you know as a board that we're keeping close eye on is our English Language Arts, uh, proficiency, and that will compare how our special education students are doing in ELA compared to our regular education students as well. Um, we also, uh, it's our year to take the Youth Risk, uh, Behavior Survey, so I, I did provide some old results, so you can see what's in there. It's a very in-depth survey, and you learn a lot about students. Um, it is anonymous, um, so I think you do get some true answers. There's some kids I'm sure that, um, don't take it very seriously, but most do, and you get a lot of good information, which our principals can then, especially at the middle and high school, use to create goals. Um, uh, again, you, you're gonna find out about everything from sleep habits to drug and alcohol use, to sexual activity, to bike safety, driving safety, all kinds of things like that. So we'll have some good information, um, from the YRBS.
I read through the previous, some of the previous ones you posted, and the answers do seem, to some of the questions seem much higher than if students were not telling the truth.
Right, right. Yeah, if you, if they, if it could be linked back to them, they may not give you the same answer, which is, which is good to, to get the truth out of them and, and be able to identify some of the problems that we're having in the schools and the community. Um, in that second portion, uh, again, we did celebrate Spread Goodness Day. I wanted to focus on, um, the parent meetings that the high school is having, and Jess not here tonight, but, uh, one of the things that we specifically learned about, I put a couple of examples up there about things that parents were giving him specific feedback on, but I'll, I'll give you an example. So just opening up and having that conversation with parents, we got some feedback on the senior awards night, which is in May coming up, and those that had been through it before had suggested, so anybody that's going to get any kind of award isn't invited. Some students, though, are only going to get like a, a, a grade point average, a GPA honor certificate. Others are going to get bigger awards, and so the parents said it'd be good to be able to tell them you're getting this award, not specifically, but you're getting this honor roll award, or you're getting another, a larger award, because some students may not want to sit through an hour and a half ceremony to get a sheet of paper. So, but that was parent feedback that we had gotten specifically on that. Yeah. Uh, for both our staff and our parents, now hopefully, uh, most of you are, are parents in the district here, you got an email directly from School Perceptions. Um, we're not a part of that. I sent out an email to parents to expect that email, um, but let you know it's not a scam, it's, it's, it's not, uh, a shortage, it's something that we want you to respond to, and that make it, makes it completely anonymous. We don't know where these, um, uh, come from, which hopefully we also get then honest information back, both from our staff and from our parents. Uh, the parents is open for two weeks, just like staff, and then hopefully we get those results back by June, and similarly to the YRBS, we'll make goals out of those, so we can see what, um, our staff is saying, what our parents are saying, and then use those for goals for, for 2025, '26. And then, um, finally, I, I did, uh, attend a C C two presentation just on, uh, bargaining. Um, obviously for both our support staff and professional staff, bargaining can start as early as the spring. Oftentimes it goes into next school year. Uh, nothing new, but just a review of things to keep in mind when you're, um, bargaining. There's no new update on, uh, Act 10, even though now we now have, uh, a better idea of what that Supreme Court will look like at the state level and how they might act on pending, um, litigation. And then last but not least, um, uh, something that you may, you may be interested in, I, I do go to those economic development committees. They had a, a member from Mark Polkan's office there, and somebody just asked the question, like, "How busy are you right now?" And they said usually they get 300 calls in a week, and when this was last month, they were getting 3,000 calls in a week. So there's a lot going on, as we know, at the federal level, which, um, even with education now, people are, are, are worried about and calling about. And then finally, uh, one piece of our, uh, safety committee is our local fire inspector has asked to come and be part of a, a fire drill for every building in the spring, so they can see what that looks like and potentially identify any problems, and then resolutions to those issues that they see when they're on site.
Any questions for Mr. Perry? Uh, thank you. Moving on to week of the young child activities.
Um, Jess may have some things to add, but, uh, really two pieces. Um, so the week ends this, this week, it's a family fun night. Uh, it's free for families, and you can see some of the things that they will have. Not just fun things, but if you wanted to get your child's, uh, eyes tested, that will be there as well. You might want to do that before they do the face painting, uh, but that, uh, is, is part of what they've got, uh, planned for Friday. There's also dress-up days this week, and many of, there's a national, uh, week, but then you'll also see some of the Evansville twist on these, like obviously Friday is, you know, dress in your Blue Devil blue. Um, I, I actually like Thursday because it's as many dresses in as many colors as you can. Um, I'm a dad of four girls, and at that age at, uh, Levi, I would have had them in the craziest, they would love to put on every single pattern and color that they can. So, um, anything that you want, and I know a lot of this is done by Amy Phone from Aware, and, uh, is trying to get into those youngest grades.
Yeah, Amy Phone and the area daycare is really run a lot of this, and they do a great job. Uh, they invited me in, so that was nice, so that we could add these dress-up days to our week and be part of it in that way. And then, yep, the field house on Friday will be a blast. One thing that has been added that I don't think is noted on there is dinner will be provided, not provided, five dollars, um, from PTO, just as a PTO fundraiser that night, too. So.
You have to be in Levi Leonard to go.
Great question. Thank you. That was the other thing I was gonna say. Everyone is welcome. Everybody's welcome. Um, as Levi Leonard principal, obviously I was there as part of the meeting, but all kids are welcome, all families are welcome.
Thank you. Moving on, April 1st, school board election results.
Um, Paige has got the, um, results up, and we do have, um, obviously Hope will remain on the board. We've got Melissa here tonight and Ryan here tonight. Um, this was, um, a fairly typical election on election night. Um, I, uh, did try to get out to, uh, the media that we know usually wants our results, and then also to, um, our candidates so that they can see. And this, for me, to be able to talk to the clerks is the easiest way to collect this on that night. Um, being new in the fall, I did have some media outlets saying like, "Where are you getting your information from?" And I had to explain, "I'm getting the information directly from the clerk who's reading off the tape, which is the tape that you're going to use when you have canvassing." So, um, one slight difference that you'd see from the November is, um, there were some provisional ballots, um, this time in both Union Township and then the city of Evansville. So usually we'll have the election on Tuesday, and we'll be able to canvas on Thursday, a couple of days later. What happened this time, though, is because of provisional ballots, um, they, the Union and Evansville had to wait until Friday, uh, evening, uh, to have those come in, if they were going to come in. Then they had to verify those results in their own canvassing on Monday, which then left a very narrow window on Tuesday to be able to, um, do our own canvassing. So it was unusual, and we hadn't had to deal with those provisional ballots in the past. It only changed, uh, one vote in the totals that went out, uh, last week. So, uh, we will have, uh, Hope was our top vote getter, Ryan was our second, um, uh, vote getter, so they will be on three-year terms, obviously starting, uh, later this month, and then, uh, Melissa will serve the rest of, you think way back Sandy's, uh, term, um, so that, and the reason that we do that is to keep the spacing, so that you don't have too many board members going off at the same time, and then you have a lot of, uh, knowledge leaving the board at, at once. Uh, thank you to the group that canvassed, including Crystal, because that was a very early Tuesday morning. Again, we had to pivot, not on something that we could control, but those provisional ballots made things a little bit different this time. And then, uh, Paige did a great job working with the clerks in, in the city with Leah, and then, um, out in, in Union with Regina as well. So.
That day, and it was so busy. It was so great. Constant.
Yeah, even when I was calling, or they were calling me, um, they were saying that they thought they would be ready with the results about 8:30, and some of them lasted until about 8:50 or later, because they were still counting some, some ballots at that time. So, and again, thank you to our clerks that are very good about working with us and getting us the information. Otherwise, you'd have had to wait till the end of the night and looked at Green County results, Dane County results, and Rock County results, completed those all together to get what we had at about a little bit before nine o'clock that night. So, um, uh, as, as you know, um, we'll have, and Paige will work on this, um, we, we will have, uh, swearing in and the oaths, and then, uh, have already set up a time with, uh, Ryan and Melissa to come in next week to do some onboarding, um, and we'll work through that to see if they have any questions before they get started. Uh, officially, um, and this is something that we will discuss later on, but officially, um, John and Dana, you're still on until the, uh, 28th.
Is that scattering me?
Write-ins.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and, and there was some information, just so you know, uh, having done this for, I don't know how many years now, five years in collecting these kinds of things, because in my last job, I was also split between counties, and so to get the results that night, you had to talk to all the clerks. Um, what you see on your ticker and what I find are not very similar. And so there were, um, what they were calling write-in votes in the media that weren't write-in votes, they were actually undervotes. So for example, with our election, we had three spots, and if somebody only voted for two out of the three, that's one undervote, and so they do keep track of that, and so they were reporting undervotes as write-in votes. Uh, and so if you saw that, you may think, "Why are there so many write-in candidates?" There really weren't. They were, they were reporting incorrectly in the media.
All right, yeah. Congratulations, Hope, Melissa, and Ryan. Um, moving on, recognition of outgoing board members.
All right. Um, I actually have, uh, a couple of plaques that will, will get out here in just a minute for Dana and, and John, but I did want to say just a, a few things. Uh, this board, as it's currently constructed, um, and I have a lot of appreciation for the seven people that are here, uh, in front of us, because having worked with a lot of boards over the years, this board is very efficient. I think they're very respectful of people's time and that they come prepared to meetings, but still ask very good questions. Um, and I think it's a very student-centered board. Um, even if you talk to the, uh, uh, principals and the administrators that have seen lots of different combinations of boards over the years, this one is very much focused on what's best for kids, and, um, also, again, very focused on the work that you're doing. I don't think anybody, um, enjoys three-hour meetings, and if you come prepared to the meetings with the information that you have, we can still have great discussions and, um, uh, good questions, but, uh, typically you have some fatigue after about two hours in a meeting, and you might make decisions that aren't the best decisions at that time. So, uh, I really appreciate this board. In general, um, people don't really know how much time that you put in, even to reading the packets that go out twice a month, there's probably an hour or more just in reading that, depending on what you have in front of you, and then some of the committee time, um, the pay, if you were doing that by hours, probably quarters, I would say. And then, when you do make decisions that aren't going to be popular all the time, I know you all do it in the best interest of kids and what's good for our students here in Evansville, and, um, sometimes you're probably getting feedback that's not super positive, but you're doing a, a great service to the community. I really appreciate that. So, um, I just wanted to say a few words about Dana, a few words about John, get them a plaque, and anybody else that wants to say anything about Dana and John, uh, that would be great. So we'll start with Dana. Dana's our current, uh, vice president, has served, uh, at the, now the end of her, uh, term since 2022. Um, here's what, here's what many people would not know. Um, Dana and I have a lot of frequent phone conversations, and what I've learned over the last, really, 14 months, uh, you know, because I was hired in January of '24, I guess that would be, um, is how much she puts into the term "all kids." Um, it's not just about our high-achieving kids, or even our kids that are struggling the most, but even our middle kids, our kids that are gonna go on to college, our kids that are gonna go into the workforce, our kids that play sports, our kids that are not other extracurriculars. And so, you, nobody would know in those conversations that we have when she has questions about a board packet or something like that, but, um, there's just this deep pairing that she has, and I think that's evident in what she does out in the community as well. But, um, I really appreciate that about Dana. Um, John, uh, just a little history here. John was first on the board in 2011, uh, was on until 2020, and then came back in 2022. Um, we know John well as our treasurer for the last few years. Um, maybe a fact that went unnoticed, but, uh, John had his own two sons graduate from Evansville High School, and when that happened, that was the fourth generation of Rasmussen's to graduate from Evansville High School. So deeply rooted in the community, and again, John was willing to serve on lots of different, um, uh, committees over the years. Uh, what I will remember about John is, again, uh, very much like Dana, kids first, and, um, now that we're starting to restore some of our hires with tech ed, a huge proponent of technology education and the trades here for our students, uh, in Evansville. And last but not least, I think we will all remember John. I don't know who's going to, um, adjourn meetings from here on out, but adjourning meetings and then everybody asking John what his subway order is for, after that. If anybody else wants to say anything, otherwise I would like to present Dana and John with their plaques and get a picture. There is cake. I think we have a volunteer that might be able to help dish cake and, uh, pass that, pass that out today, too.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Perry said. Thank you for, uh, you know, service here, and it's not always easy, and, and, and I think you've, both of you have brought really good ideas and sound mind, and I think it's been a pleasure to be part of this work.
I've appreciated working with both of you. Uh, especially appreciate Dana. I think becoming friends with her on Becoming Better Neighbors is sort of what got me interested in the school district, and she encouraged me to run for school board the first time, and so I don't think I would be here without Dana. So, I have appreciated working with you on the board and appreciate being friends with you outside.
You both were so welcoming. Like, I was very nervous to come in the middle, and both of you were just so kind, and I really, uh, thank you for doing that. We can get a good process.
And I just want to say, I have really enjoyed you so much. I will, I will miss you, and it's a nice thing to be able to say.
You can come.
I'll be sitting there sometimes. I'll be watching the board.
Sub in. I'll be here rooting. Tap in.
Substitute. I think Seth wanted a sub.
I guess I will say thank you to my president and past board members for putting up my idiosyncrasies over. And especially thank you for the education I've gotten out of this over the years. So, I wish good luck to the new board.
Dana, I've got, uh, it, and me being new to Evansville, this was something that I'm very much used to. Um, these, uh, actually are from W A S B, and it, uh, recognizes your service to the board, and I think it's important, um, that, uh, you have something that you could put up to show of your, your time of service. So, maybe, um, I think I could take your picture if you wanted to go over here.
Okay.
Dana, this is yours.
This is yours. I think I could get, well, a good one of you, if you just wanted to stand right over here.
Stand over there. Okay, John.
I've got a post for Facebook, so.
Your wall, your gray wall. Don't look at me.
Thank you so much.
I do at the end of the meeting want to get a picture with all the board.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right. All right, uh, let's move on to business action. Uh, second reading, approval of updates of two bylaws, rules, and administrative 1,000 policies since, uh, 2022.
I make a motion to adopt the, uh, since 2020. It's okay, I was gonna wait for you guys to, uh, to, since 2022, by the, to the bylaws, the 0000 series and administration 1,000 series new policies as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. With that, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Thanks again to the policy committee for, you can maybe do so much work on this. Appreciate you.
All right, next is consent. Does anybody want anything removed? And I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second, let's vote. Motion carries zero with one obscene. Next is the future agenda. Does anybody want anything added or removed?
Just a couple of notes. One, we will need to discuss the date, and I'll get into that in just a second. One other piece of this is that you will notice our food service vendor process. That process did go to DPI. Remember, this is a very structured process. And so that is, although usually I'd like to spread that out between two meetings, talk about it, and then have the action on it. In this case, there's very little to discuss because DPI sets up the rubric. You fill out the rubric, you give it to DPI, and DPI approves that bid. I can tell you, because this is now public knowledge, they've awarded the bid. The bid has gone back to Aramark. And I will talk about why that is. A lot of it was about guaranteed money that was part of the bid process. So I will have those details for the board at our next meeting. But that's why you're gonna see a discussion, but then an action item at the same time. We do have a process that we have to follow through DPI. The other piece is I would like to try to get a policy committee meeting date, potentially next week. That could be either, I would be able to do it either the 15th or 16th, if that works for Hope and Crystal and Elliot. There are 38 policies between the 3,000s and 4,000s. Many of those are repeats because they have the same policy for support staff as they have for professional staff. And so the first time I started working on policies a number of years ago, I thought I was going crazy because I was reading the same policy again. It just happened to be in a different section of the series. Would either Tuesday or Wednesday of the week work for us?
I can only do Tuesday. I can't do Wednesday. Only do Wednesday.
Either? Okay.
I trust them.
Okay. And Crystal, you said you could do Tuesday?
I could do Tuesday.
Okay. And Hope, you're okay with us?
Yep, absolutely.
All right. And I know you have access to it, if there's anything that you need to, okay. So we'll go with the 15th then. Thank you. Typically, we've done the 5:30. Does that work for you, Elliot? And then I did send out an email today because the schedule for board meetings for this current year, all the way through the election and board reorganization, was done back in April of last year. And probably because April 1st was a Monday last year, when the board set up their meetings, the 24th was actually the fourth Monday. So you were able to do board reorganization fairly early last year. This year, though, what happens is, so I doubt anybody paid much attention to that. But what happens is you cannot have board reorganization until on or after the fourth Monday of April. So that is April 28th. We had the meeting scheduled on the 23rd. It cannot be the 23rd. So that would mean if we were to keep on a Wednesday schedule, one date would be the 30th, but I know Mitch has a conflict with that. And had we kept it on the 23rd, which we would have been able to, Seth had a conflict with that. With board reorganization, we need Ryan and Melissa and the other remaining five board members to all be there because obviously there's officer election and then committee assignment and discussion about committee setup as well. So if that's the case, we could move that meeting, unfortunately, to the 7th, which isn't unusual. You just have to do that in 30 days of the last Monday in April. Obviously, May 7th would fit within that. The deeper that we get into May, we typically have only had one meeting in May because I can tell you that the 14th of May is an awards night at the high school. The 21st of May is a scholarship night at the high school. And the May 28th is fine arts night at the high school. So it is loaded with Wednesday kind of special events as we, we had to talk about, but get closer to graduation this year. So would May 7th work for our five board members and our two incoming members? Okay? If we keep the one meeting in May, we may need to have a very quick special meeting. The thing about this time of year is there's hiring to do. And we would probably need to meet at least one more time in May, even if it's for a short period of time, to do some consent agenda staffing approval within that.
So the 23rd for sure is off.
Yes, and that would move to then May 7th, if that's agreeable to the board and our incoming.
We have cake. It's my birthday.
Oh, is it? I could get you a better cake. You could come back, but.
I'll bring cake.
We can. So we will move that to.
Sir, three years on a board. Nate, would you like to have the high school representatives present at that meeting then? That would be their last meeting?
That would be the last one.
And the 7th, we'd still start at 6?
Still start at 6.
And so Nate, our service still ends on the 28th then?
Still ends on the 28th.
Though they're not starting, I mean, they're sworn in before then, but they.
Correct. It was nice. I just, WASB puts on a webinar and was just on a webinar today. Not a lot of new information, but it does help, does reminders about board reorganization. So there will be an email that will go out tomorrow to the five current board members and Melissa and Ryan as a preview, just to, if you don't know a lot and haven't experienced board reorganization, it's a different process, and so I've got some reminders and some things just to prepare for that.
Who serves as vice president in that time between when Dana is no longer serving on the board? Reorganization.
Yeah, it would be vacant at that point.
All the power goes to Mitch.
Typically, unless there is, well, unless there's a complaint against the president or something like that, then.
Don't mess up. I can't refuse that.
Thank you for your flexibility. And Paige and I have already looked ahead and made sure that that is not happening again. In a district where you do have those two monthly meetings that I'm sure could happen if somebody's not thinking that far down the road.
And then like, potentially maybe the 21st if we need to do a consent song.
And we may, yeah, we may need to have a special meeting just to get some staffing in.
Put a hold for the 21st.
That would be great.
All right, since we got that figured out, the last thing is.
For the last and final time, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Vote. Motion carries seven zero. We adjourn.